March 2, 2020 meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sue, roll call please.
Connaught Swin, Kathleen Raymo.
Here.
Anthony Devona.
Here.
Case Duplessis. Jonathan Ramsey.
Here.
Luz Raza. Paul Rinaldi. Mary Ann Rosa.
Here.
Rachel Ryan.
Here.
Thank you. Public participation? Anyone to the podium, state your name and address? Thank you.
I'm Deb Smalley. I live at 760 Middlebury Road. I've been fighting the town of Watertown for 14 years. They widened my road in front of my house, and I had nothing but trouble. I had recently a few paving companies come out. They don't even want to touch my driveway. They said, "You can't fix it until you fix the problem with the road." I got a letter from Mr. Kavanaugh that said, he's going back to Skeneau's letter a couple of years ago. There's nothing the town's going to do. It's not the town's fault. I showed pictures of rain, ponds. It's a disaster. And when you have paving companies that they don't, I'm sure everybody wants to make a buck, they don't even want to touch my driveway because they don't want to guarantee anything. And then I had one gentleman come out and he said, "Oh, we could rip up two feet of the front of your lawn, dig down two feet and grate it out, and hopefully the water that's coming down the street will go down the road and not come in." But that's, it's not even a positive thing, and he's going to rip my front lawn from the problem that this town did? I lived here for almost 36 years on Middlebury Road. I raised three kids. I showed pictures of the road going flush right with the, right with Middlebury Road. Now, if someone, and I don't know who came out, because they said someone from the town council came out to my property. I have cameras. I didn't see anybody come out. There's nobody, they're just going by an old letter. There's no one that came to my property. Someone, and I'm inviting all of you, whenever you want to come out, come and see the disaster that this town did to my property. What am I going to do when I'm going to sell it? My house is sinking. It's cracking. I don't understand. Like, why can't they just put a storm drain right before my driveway, down to Patty Basset's storm drain? Just, but they tell me sue the town. Why would I want to sue the town I live in and that I love? I mean, it's, why would I want to do that? Just fix the problem you caused. And the town council, I thought you were on my side, but Roy Kavanaugh, for 14 years, he said he had nothing to do with the pipe that they put in my land. And he's saying that I took off the, the curbing that, that I bang my low BMW that slams on it every time I have to go home and I got to go out. He's saying I ripped up the curbing? Why would I rip up a curbing that helps some of the water stay out? It's, it doesn't make sense. He doesn't make sense. I mean, I'm sorry, I wish he was here, because he makes no sense. And Skeneau, he tells me it's coming from my neighbor. I said, "What neighbor?" There's no neighbor. What neighbor? I, I just don't understand this town. You have to fix the problem. I mean, I don't know what I'm supposed to do. They said nine years ago, sue us. Sue you for what? For pain and suffering that I went through and migraines and going to doctors for migraines and stress? Sue you for that? Or for, what do, what, what does the town want me to do? I don't know. You have my hands tied. We show you pictures.
All right.
My name is Mark Sanduley. I've been dealing with the same problem because I've been with Ms. Smalley for 12 years. So, two years into this, I've been dealing with the same problem with her yard. The, when the city public works realized that they made a problem with this, with the street, they put a tiny little pipe in. I mean, a sewer is this big. They put a two-inch pipe in her yard, and they were going to allow, the problem is that the water can't get out of the driveway because they made the street too high. So, the water can't get out. So, it doesn't matter if it rains hard and comes into the driveway. It doesn't matter if it comes down the street, comes into the driveway. It doesn't matter if it comes from the backyard, comes into the driveway. The old driveway was allowed, the water was allowed to go out because the, the driveway was higher than the road. So, the water, any water that ended up in her driveway would go right out. So, they're saying that it's, it's clear, I don't, we don't need to hire companies to come look at it. You could stand in the street and you could see the water cross the road because of the pitch that they put in the road, angled it right towards her house, and there's nowhere for that water to go but right into her property. So, what the town basically did was make Mrs. Smalley's property the bottom of a sewer for 14 years. And they've, they've, for the first couple of years, they told her they were going to fix it, until the gentleman who actually designed the street retired a few years back. Then they started sending her letters that saying they're not going to do anything for her. She's on her own. She has to, they basically told her she has to hire a lawyer, which would cost her $50,000 for a problem that the town created. And I believe that now is the time, after 14 years, that one of you is going to step up and tell Mr. Kavanaugh that he needs to fix the problem that he created and his people created. Someone, um, like I said, you don't even, you don't need a survey. If you go there, you can see the cars that are coming down the street. The water splashes because it crosses the road.
I'm begging, but come over.
It's okay.
Deb, I'm going to meet with, Deb, I'm going to meet with Roy Kavanaugh this week, either this week or next.
Please.
I will get with him.
I mean, all, I'd like to vote everyone, the whole town of Watertown, but come over. It's a disaster.
Her driveway now really looks, is really, really bad.
Okay, let's go. I mean, they've heard me for 14 years. I mean, I think they're sick of me.
Thank you for your time today.
Anyone else for public participation? Does that belong here, or did they leave that? Does anybody know? Catherine Camara, 31 Cottage Place in Oakville. I just wanted to know, after the council votes to appropriate money out of the general fund, who, who signs off on the requests for payment to the finance department to make the payment from the general fund? Who's responsible to sign that? I've seen requests for payments where it's come out of the general fund and somebody signs it. I don't know. Is that somebody from the town council? Tom, please.
Um, it would be whatever, whatever department is making the payment. If you want to give me an example, I'll explain how it works.
I'll, I'll email you one to see who would have signed it then. I didn't know if it was something that's just a standard.
No, it's approved here, and then it comes to the department.
It goes to the department that requested it.
And then through finance for payment.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else for public participation? Anyone else for public participation? Participation, public participation is now closed. I could get a motion for the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of February 3, 2020's regular meeting.
Second?
I would like to make one correction. Under the people you have present and the people you have absent, they can't both be present and absent, so I have to cross off a couple minutes.
Oh. Were you here, Anthony?
No, I was not.
Anthony was not here.
In case of case.
Case it was not, right? Oh, I see. You're going to take those out? Okay. So, with those corrections, motion to accept, or I'm sorry, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Proposed? Abstained?
I'll abstain.
Motion passes. Chairman's report, I don't have anything from Tom. His correspondence is placed on file, so we'll check with him when he comes back in two weeks. Subcommittee reports, anybody have anything other than? Mayor, I want to pass it over to you.
Okay, we're on to the second round of department reports, and we start this evening with planning and zoning. Page 18 in your budget book.
Good evening. Mark Masood, Land Use Administrator for the Land Use Department, representing Planning and Zoning, Conservation Commission, and Zoning Board of Appeals. Arguably, the three of them together are one of the more visible and impactful departments on the growth and development of the, of the town. Going right to the, just a quick overview, the P and Z portion of the budget is 200, currently 270,629 dollars, proposed 285,923, 285,923 dollars. The increase results from a shift of personnel line items. We had a part-time secretary who last year was made full-time, and her, the portioning of her salaries has been put into the planning and zoning budget and taken out of conservation and inland wetlands. Also due to two budget, two notable budget increases. The ZBA budget, so as a result, the ZBA budget, which is currently 15,908, has, is reduced to 6,580 dollars. The conservation budget currently at 15,678 dollars, reduced to 5,600 dollars, so that approximately 12,180 dollars is put into the P and Z budget line item. The two main requests that represent an increase, one is for outside services, a consultant, and that's for the amount of $10,000, and it relates directly to implementation of the plan of conservation and development and the next steps. So, as you know, the plan, the P O C D is the town's 10-year plan for growth, development, and conservation. Having passed that two years ago, the next step is to revise the zoning regulations to align with the P O C D. We want to be proactive in terms of encouraging and guiding the appropriate development proposals in specific areas of town, among other goals. So, those areas include the Watertown Business Park, the Bunker Hill Road, 100-acre parcels that are, that are available for development, the Straits Turnpike Business Area, the Sealy Property, and the Route 262 Corridor. We had, when we did the, when we revised the P O C D, we had quotes of approximately $15,000 just for an initial review. However, I plan to utilize, I plan to utilize alternate services like those provided by, by Kerma to help to implement that, that revision without, maybe a reduced price. The second item is for a, an intern. The number is approximately $3,000 based on a, the cost to have a summer intern. Similar organizations find them extremely useful to quickly accomplish their projects. Recent example, I had a, a young man from Watertown just going to college, was into, was planning to be into civil engineering, and he wanted to, he wanted to intern, well, he wanted to come to the office and learn about the planning process. Over the winter, for the course of a week while he was on break, he helped, at no cost to the town, just volunteering, he helped to make a plan of conservation and development online presentation with the short, medium, and long-term goals. He created a online survey, a set of online survey questions, a mail merge document, and an invitation list. And I wasn't expecting him to accomplish like any of that, but given that he was a millennial, he whipped through these, these tasks like nothing. So, we would find somebody like that very helpful over the summer. In summary, because of consolidation and decreases in some of our budgets, we were able to, our requested increase represents a $13,000 increase over the current budget in amount equal to the line item request, even factoring in the anticipated personnel changes that are inevitably, you know, drive increases to the budget. We feel that the, the budget increase would have exponentially greater positive impact upon the future growth of the town, and thank you. I'll answer any questions if you wish.
Anyone? I had a question about the professional and technical services. There's a sort of a big discrepancy between the 2019, 20-year estimate of 17 to down to 15, but then, assuming you put it at 10.
I'm sorry. What that represents is a, the inland wetlands agency hired a, an outside consultant to assist it in performing a review, a technical review of a, a large, a proposal for a large parcel in, on Park Road. And so, that, that was conducted by Malone and McBroom. It was paid to the town, and then the town in turn paid the, paid the, paid the consultant. So, that's what that, that represents. That's kind of an outlier from, from what we're, from what the numbers we're proposing. We have, we have $5,000 currently in that line item for planning and zoning and asking for an additional 10, but that 17 was, was paid, was already paid services reimbursed 100% to the town.
Mm-hmm. Oh, okay. Got it.
Let me check. You mentioned having an intern in the past and the different projects that they were able to accomplish. I was wondering if there are any specific projects you have in mind for this coming intern that you put into the budget?
Right. I would, I could have, it was so easy to find a project over the winter, I'd have them help us to further the implementation of the P O C D. There's a lot of, there's a lot of small tasks that just don't get done. Those include following up on, say, the Main Street traffic study, following up with Eversource on, on movement or removal of poles, doing various surveys, and just helping us to, you know, to implement tasks like he did for us over the, over the winter.
Thank you.
We haven't had a ser, we haven't had an intern yet, at least in my, in my tenure. So, again, I thought either having one over the summer or even making it available to high school students over the, over the course of the school year would be greatly helpful to us.
Quick question. You said, Mark, that there was an increase. It looks like, were you just talking about planning and zoning, or were you talking about all the departments? Because it looks to me like it's almost a wash between, but, in other words, from last year to this year.
Correct. Outside of the, outside of the, the proposed, the proposed increases being the $13,000, you're, you're right. The budget because of consolidation and various reductions, it looks like we're able to make it pretty much of a, pretty much of a wash.
So, the three departments, pretty similar to last year's budget?
Correct.
When you add them all together, right?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify.
Yep.
I have a question. Your, your comment about contacting Eversource for removal of poles, is that something residents should do? Contact the town versus contacting Eversource directly?
I'm sorry, this would be along the, along the mains, along Main Street.
Only Main Street.
And along some of the side streets, there are poles that are smack dab in the middle of the sidewalk, and we'd love to talk, to push along a program with Eversource to remove or move, maybe I shouldn't say remove, to move them so that the sidewalks are more, more accessible.
What about where they have double poles that obstruct view when you're pulling out of the street? Because there are a couple of those around town.
Sure, absolutely. Those could be, those could be included.
So, should someone be contacting you or Eversource directly?
Well, it's a good question. In terms, we have been looking at Main Street and the surround, and the immediate.
Okay, so they can call Eversource directly?
So, they could call Eversource.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to the fire department.
Good evening. My name is Dave Romley, 80 Hickory Lane, Watertown. I'm the fire chief.
James Tamaris, 137 High Street, deputy.
Thank you for having us tonight and giving us the opportunity to give you a little explanation of the department and how our budget is. As you see, this is our 2021 year. We are all volunteers serving our community since May 8 of 1894. Our current membership is 82 active members, 10 less than last year. We have 58 members who are Connecticut Certified EMS responders, one department surgeon, and two department chaplains. Annually, we save the town probably $6 million in costs because we are not a paid, full-time department. We're all volunteers, paid on call. We operate out of two stations. We have four engines, one tanker, two aerial trucks, a rescue, a utility brush truck, three EMS response vehicles, two utility vehicles, three command cars, two fire marshal cars for the fire marshals, one ATV, two trailers, a rescue boat, and an ice rescue boat and sled, which are always ready to respond. We do rescue, fire, and medical. Our members train excessively. In 2019, our members logged over 3,500 hours of volunteering, of training. This training is all the same as what a paid department sends their people at. Annually, we send firefighters this spring. We have five members going to fire school. Each member costs $1,150 to go to training. Through our fire marshal's office and our public education, volunteer fire departments visit the grammar schools, pre-schools, parochial schools each year during October, which is Fire Prevention Month. The department also hosts an open house, which we bring in the public who learns on what we are about and how to prevent fires. Watertown Fire responded to 2,684 fire rescue and EMS calls in 2019, an increase from the previous year of 150 alarms. Currently, we have an SCBA problem, which is our self-contained breathing apparatus. Two years ago, we had to do an emergency appropriation because the equipment was failing. That was taken out of our vehicle replacement fund to cover that cost. We still are short 30, 40 units. Last year, we asked for a plan. We were denied. This year, we're hoping to get at least six units per year on a rotating replacement basis. We asked for a gear dryer for Station 1. Last year, you guys gave us a gear washer and a gear dryer for Company 2. Currently, our gear washer, gear washers at Company 1 is working fine. We have one dryer which only handles three sets of gear. A set of gear usually takes about eight hours to dry. We're getting into the process now. We just had a recent fire at the Thera plant where we had 40 guys there, 40 sets of gear had to be washed. It took hours, not, days for this to be done. So, we need another dryer. That was, you know, cut right now, so, but I think we can, we saved some money with the dryer and washer we bought this, this year, so we may be able to do an appropriation and get that dryer through money. We might have it ready. Our vehicle replacement fund, annually, it's been asked for 150,000. Last year, we got the 150. So, we're against asking that again. This is to replace aging equipment. The current engine which you see is Engine 1, which is a 1997 Simon duplex. Based on the funding, replacement costs and the money being funded, that truck won't be replaced until 2024, making it 27 years old, and NFPA standards rate that you should be replacing a truck between 20 and 25 years old. This page here you have, I gave you a copy of this. Instead of going on line item by line item, these are what our increases are for the year of what we asked for. Page 27, we asked for $20,555. This is for the administrative assistance salary and contract and staff annual increases. We also added, we want to add five hours each to the chief's position and deputy chief's position. That, and that was the cost. Town manager has taken these chiefs and deputy chiefs five hours out and only gave the 32, 40 of that. Page 29, we asked for $20,000 in the length of service recruitment and retention plan. This is our 401 plan. Last year, we were given 2,000. We asked for 25,000. Again, this year, we asked for 20. What this does is this gives us recruitment and enhancements and incentives for people to come on department and once they're on, to stay on. It would give them money in a 401 plan. There's a lot of departments in the state and in the country now that give tax abatements of $1,000. This is only like $600 now is what we're getting per person. And the reason why we want to do the 401 is that with tax abatements, you get a new kid, junior kid, he's 19, 20 years old, he doesn't have property to have tax abatement. So, this gives him some kind of plan to have a 401 started for him. And if he stays, the longer he stays, the more money that's put into the plan for him. Page 29, again, 22,000 for the first of three installments for replacement car 2, which is 12 years old now. This is an ongoing replacement fund that we've always done. Page 31, we asked for $2,180 to bring the hourly rate to $20 each for our mechanics for each firehouse. Currently, they do 12 and a half hours at the Main Street Firehouse and seven hours at the Buckingham Street Firehouse every month. It's a high-end job. They have a lot of things to do, and they're really getting paid nothing to do that now. So, this would bring their pay to $20 an hour.
What is their pay now, chief?
10.
$10.
Yeah, a little more than 10, yeah. Right now, the current budget, that line item budget is $2,500. So, we're asking it to be 40, it's 46, 80 is what the number would be. Page 31, again, $20,000 to begin a six-unit-per-year replacement program for portable radios. Current, our current portable radios are approaching 17 years old and no longer are manufactured, supported. Manager kept that number for us. Page 31, again, we asked for $34,623 to begin, like I said, a six-unit-per-year self-contained breathing apparatus replacement program to again, start changing, you know, getting new of our current inventory. And the town manager at the time left that alone. And you'll see on page 31, again, $8,000 for the gear dryer for Company 1, which is, was denied, but like I said, we can probably figure something out. So, we asked for 1,025,133. Town manager gave us 984,818. We are asking the council to restore the requested five hours each for the chief and deputy. These hours requested are what the fire administration had prior to the council's change to the fire chief, fire marshal staff, which occurred after retirements, and the chief positions changed to a part-time position in the spring of 2018. The current hours a week, 25 for the chief and 10 for the deputy are not enough, but the chief and deputy chief currently work in extra hours unpaid to fulfill mandated reporting requirements and administrative tasks, which include, but are not limited to, report writing for incidents, for all equipment and apparatus uses, repairs, and training, maintaining department equipment required by federal and state licensing, doing knifers, reports, ISO reports, NFPA reports, OSHA, and grant writing, kidding with just a few. These additional hours granted will not change the chief or deputy chief as part-time staff. For reference, in the 2018, 2019 budget year, the budget was cut $16,104 due to the council's change of the fire chief, fire marshal staff, that with the additional hours to the chief and deputy chief being 17, 315, if it was proved this year, the difference is only $1,211. Also note that any hours that are after that the chief or deputy respond to incidents, fire incidents, rescue incidents, those are not, are considered as a volunteer and you're paid per call hours. So, we don't get paid to go to calls. We just get paid for administrative staff duties. I'm also asking the council restore 5,000 of the 15,000 cut from the original 20,000 requests for the LoSAP length of service program that enhances recruitment and retention. Like I said, towns are struggling with ways to recruit and retain volunteer members, with towns giving tax abatements, which don't entice younger members. Like I said, towns are struggling with ways to recruit and retain volunteer members, with towns giving tax abatements with don't entice younger members. With the council's support of the restoration to the requested five hours each for the chief and deputy and the low sap items, the fire department would be one million, seven thousand, one hundred and thirty-three dollars. This is an increase of twenty-two thousand, three fifteen above the manager's recommended, nine, nine hundred and eighty-four thousand, eight eighteen. Currently, my deputy chief has been working on grants. We, on Saturday, we have to submit grant program, I'll let him talk a little bit about that.
When we met with Sue and we talked about other funding options, we're looking into grants for upgrading our turnout gear and possibly a grant that would cover the replacement cost of the SCBA. So we have that. Fire Act grant is open right now, and we have submitted for that as long as we get approval from the council on the funding, which I think would be able to come out of our budget. The town's portion is approximately ten percent, so I think we would have enough funding in the budget to cover that. But that would take care of the SCBA portion of the thirty-four thousand that would be in hand, if that was, if we were approved on the grant. And the grant is approximately seven-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars.
Anybody have questions?
Good, Chair. Do you know what timeline you'll know as far as a response for those grants?
I don't. I wish I had an answer, but I could tell you that the grant was, it's a 2019 grant that is about a year and a half overdue. So the federal government has, has waited this long to do the grant. It was supposed to open, you know, over a year ago, and it's just opening now, so.
And it's closing quickly. They open it and then you gotta do.
It's only one month that it's open. So you have to do the whole thing in one month.
Anyone have questions? I do too, go ahead.
I'm just wondering if you have any idea why you have ten fewer volunteers this year than last year?
It's just the makeup of the department, the way it is, you know, some people move on and we've had some people that just left because they changed jobs. We have like, it's a ten percent responses, what you have to have to maintain your certification with the department. Most of them do it, some people just, they just move on to another department or, unfortunately, when you're a volunteer, you become a volunteer to get the training, to go be a paid guy somewhere, is what they do.
But it's a wave. It's a, you know, it's, it fluctuates over time. I mean, next year, we could come back and say that there's a hundred members. It's just, it changes over time.
Okay, so my follow-up question was, is there anything in the budget that would help make sure that we have an adequate number of volunteers, if that's a concern of yours?
Well, this low sap program is what maintains a lot of it, a lot of guys like this, rather than a tax abatement. But we want to get it close enough to that thousand dollars a year that they're eligible for.
Yeah.
Right now, it's like six fifty, seven hundred, is what it does. And you don't, you don't just get it, you have to.
You have to earn it.
You have to earn it, you have to respond to calls, there's criteria made up in the length-of-service program that you have to make to get qualified, to get the credit for the, for the money.
I just need to clarify something. The document you gave us tonight is great. I, obviously, as you were speaking and I was looking at this, I couldn't compare it to the big budget number. So I just want to be sure that I understand. This item says, it's twenty-two thousand, three fifteen above the manager's recommendation.
Yes.
But obviously, these items are much more than that.
Right, the only thing that we didn't include in the, in the increase was the eight thousand for the gear dryer. She, she, that was zeroed out at the time, she didn't give that.
I'm not following, I, I mean, I can see right here, we've got over seventy thousand in this column of numbers. Are some of these already included in the manager's?
Yes, yes.
Okay, that's what we couldn't tell from that.
All these are, all these are what we asked for and what the manager gave.
Okay.
Right, on the right side is what town manager.
And in addition, you're asking twenty-two.
We're asking for, yeah, we're asking for we restore what we asked for.
Okay.
Right.
Just wanted to make sure that, I mean, I'm gonna go back and compare, but I just want to make sure.
Yeah, the two restorations are the hours for the chief and deputy and the five thousand more for the low sap program.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
If I could just clarify?
Sure.
That's what equals the twenty-two thousand, three hundred and fifteen?
Right, just those two items.
Just those two.
Just those two items, to restore.
Could you repeat that again? Which two items is the twenty-two?
The manager, the, the five extra hours per week.
Okay.
And the low sap additional money.
Oh, okay, all right.
I'd love to get the full twenty, if you could.
Well, as long as we know that the figure, it might be easier.
I mean, it goes to all the guys, I mean, we, we treat our guys well, and I mean, I, we're volunteers, and I would put up any guy that we have to a paid guy. I mean, we've had incidents lately, and I don't even want to say what the incident was, but people come to us and say, we want to give you guys food, what shifts, when are your shifts working? And like, we'd love to have shifts, well, we don't, we just, we have volunteer members who come here when the call goes, we go, you can't be, you guys are too fast. I go, we do our best, so, and I'm very proud of everyone that, you know, that we work with, especially my deputy, I mean, I couldn't work without him. Without him, we wouldn't be able to function.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Appreciate it. Next is Park and Recreation. You want us to go off the large notebook or the?
You're gonna want to go off your budget book.
Off the budget book, okay.
This is just like in addition to.
Okay.
Just so you, just kind of supplemental reading for tonight.
In case we can't sleep.
Lisa Carew, Park and Rec Director, three eighty-nine Northfield Road, Watertown, Connecticut. The first one is Social Services, which is part of our division. That really has basically stayed the same. The only thing I did ask was for a full-time person, which was deleted, but the other thing is for a telephone stipend, which I'm gonna ask if maybe you can consider restoring.
Which page, is that like page fifty-two?
Social Services, yeah.
What page is it? I'm digging that out.
It's, oh, twenty-nine is the division.
Is that page sixty, everyone?
So it's really, just so you know, what that department does is your food bank, your fuel bank handles a lot of inquiries about different things for housing assistance. There's a little flyer in your book tonight, the resources you can look at. There's also a bunch of stats in there, shows how many people were serviced during the course of the year with the food bank and also during the holidays. It's in the binder that I gave you tonight.
And you're asking for an additional what?
Not a lot, just three hundred dollars, just to, for her, for telephone. That, she is using her own personal phone, doesn't get any kind of stipend, so I'm requesting that. This is my original proposal, just, it was cut out. But if you look in the binder, you're gonna see the stats of how many units of service were done for the food bank last year. Adults, two thousand, thirty-three, kids, nine hundred and seventy-three, walk-ins, six hundred. New beginnings program was sixty, that's the back-to-school program, and energy assistance was a hundred and fifty. So, and then you'll see all the holiday programs in there, so it's in your, it's in your binder. Also in there is how many people gave donations of a hundred dollars or more to the food bank and energy assistance, which is in here. So the next thing is Parks. Usually, I have Mr. Dunson up here with me, it's different today. One of the things that we just got is our first installment of part of the Jack Staver Foundation endowment. We just got part of it. This year will be a portion of what we'll be getting normally, and that's at the finance director's office right now, and that's gonna be coming up where we're gonna request that you're gonna need to establish an account for that. And she's gonna sit there and collect for right now.
How much was what you received this year?
Thirteen thousand and something, it's a fraction of what we're gonna be getting normally. So as far as Parks, I'm assuming you just want to kind of skim, right, over?
Increases.
And I'm saying what?
Increases or, or changes?
Parks, just major increases. I did ask for a new fountain. First, there's, you're gonna see money in there for repair, and then you're gonna see that I did request for a new fountain for down at Echo Lake, because the one we have, we spent around nine thousand dollars on it, and it no longer functions, so. It's more of an aesthetics thing than practical, but it's beautiful when it runs, so. Security cameras, one of them is to replace camera up at Veterans. Paving would be phase four of paving. This is basically for up at Crestbrook, it comes out of Parks though, and that would be for phase four to finish that project once and for all. It's made a huge difference just in the relining and to have the parking up there where there are not potholes all over the place. Playground equipment, I did put in money, and that was for the Adams Road Park playground, which we had to take out some of the equipment because it was antiquated, and it was more of a liability, so we had removed some of that. And again, the fountain was the replacement, which is, was, I put in for twenty-five thousand dollars to replace the Echo Lake fountain. Dog park, I did put in, I was told by Mr. Nguyen back in November to put the money in for the dog park, but it was removed, so. We are still short, I'd love to finish that project this year, once and for all. We've been working on it now for five years. If you don't know, it's located behind Dollar General Store, and it just really, like I said before, we just really want to kind of finish that project once and for all.
Will this money finish it?
Well, he said originally to put in half, you guys would match half, but it's gonna be approximately twenty thousand dollars to finish it. It's a fence. The fence is, by planning and zoning requirements, we have to have a certain type of style fence. It's over an acre, it's gonna be enclosed, it's a pretty high fence, it's gonna have maintenance gates, it has all the things that we had to have. And it, it'll get it finished, so. In the Parks budget going back, there was a couple things that I did ask for the Parks maintenance people. One is where it says overseeding, it's not an overseeding, it's actually a Toro, it's an overseeder for the fields. And it could also, the sixty-nine thousand, five hundred is a quote from Toro, it could also be leased out over a course of many years. The other thing was a loader backhoe, which was a four-year lease purchase, and the other thing was a dump vehicle for, it's like a small golf cart that they use in the parks, and that was a two-year, based on a two-year lease, it's around thirty thousand. Inside your thing when you go through it tonight, you see dog park donations to date. You'll see some of the permits that we use within the office, there's for the gazebos, for any of the town properties, facilities, tournaments, and such. There's also how much has been collected so far to the special surcharge, field surcharge account that you established for us, that we collect five dollars per person, per season, per sport, that's going into a fund that will be able to do capital projects down the road without an impact to the budget. So as of today, we have seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars in there.
To a fund? Where's the fund?
It's within the town. You guys established it, took three years for us to get that established, so.
And it's ongoing?
It's ongoing, it's ongoing.
All right.
But nobody taps into it, the only time is when the Park and Rec Commission. Makes the recommendation, it's still gonna have to come to you guys for expenditure. As of right now, though, that money is just sitting in a thing, and every season, we collect money, it's going in there for big improvements. So hopefully, down the road, we won't have to ask, we'll have the money. Is there any questions on the Parks?
There's a number of different items that you've just mentioned that you put in and they were taken out of the budget by the town manager. But I did notice that the, you have the tennis court repair in here. Which tennis courts, and is there a reason why that's a priority over other things?
Okay, it's more of a priority than anything because they're the only public courts in the town of Watertown, I'm sorry, I skipped over that. They're the only public courts in the town, they're located at Crestbrook. We've been band-aiding them for years, just filling in the cracks with crack seal and stuff. This is how much it's gonna cost to renovate them. The high school team uses these courts, and right now, I'm gonna be honest with you, I, the AD director up here at the school called and said, when do you think I could get them, or they're gonna be fixed? I said, the earliest would be July, and so he's, I believe, looking at alternate places to be able to hold their practices for the high school team. These are the only courts we have, so.
Question. Do we, how do we determine that it's gonna cost fifty thousand? Did we get estimates or?
For the?
Yeah, for the tennis court, yeah.
For the tennis courts? I have, I have estimates here. The main company that we've been using, I have the quotes right here of how much it's gonna cost to repair. They have to be relining, I mean, basically, they're getting overhauled, completely overhauled. We've been, like I said, we've been using the Band-Aid routine for many, many years, just basically filling the cracks, but now we're at that point where we really have to spend some money to get them fixed. But I do have, if you wanted to look at it, I do have a copy of the quote and stuff.
Is it, it's in here? No, you have it?
No, it's, it's not in there, it's in my budget presentation when I, when I went to the manager.
Okay.
Lisa, that's the only company, we didn't get anything competitive?
That's who, we actually put it out for a couple people, the one that responded for what it was, it wasn't put out to bid because we don't have the money. So it's just put out for proposals, so we have something to bring to you and to, to the manager.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions on this part of it?
I, did the chair have a question? The, the big equipment that you mentioned before, overseeding and the loader backhoe and, so, I, I'm a little bit confused, are those, those are the numbers to outright buy them, but they can be leased?
Well, this Toro overseeder is sixty-nine thousand, five hundred, that was the quote we got from Toro. That could be put in as a lease payment over like three, four years or whatever, and split that out, so it's not such an impact to the budget. The backhoe loader, which is also brush hog, and the mobile arm, you see it on the side, the Public Works Department has one, that they have one for the whole town. It does the roads, it's basically the same thing. That's over a hundred thousand dollars, so that's in there as a four-year lease purchase.
The twenty-six, this is four years, oh, okay.
It's over a hundred thousand.
Okay.
The utility dump vehicle, which like I said, is like a small golf cart type of machine, that's around thirty grand, they put that in as a two-year lease purchase. The only one that's in there full court was the, what's listed as an overseeding, which is an overseeder.
Okay.
Correct.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Move on to the senior center? Unless there's something else under Parks, if you want to go.
Recreation?
Oh, Rec.
Cruck?
Sure.
Okay. No, no, I can go to the senior center.
No, that's okay.
One of the big things that is really important to remember is every time they change minimum wage, ninety percent of the people that work for the departments, whether it's maintenance or, it's in the rec office, are paid somewhere minimum wage or off the chart. are paid somewhere minimum wage or off the chart. It was established years ago. You know, it'll be like the lifeguards or the people that are running basketball and stuff. And every time they change this, I mean, it's literally right in the middle of fiscal year, and it's kind of like on a staggered basis now. It's in, it's in your packet of, it's definitely an impact on this department. So I did put in there what affects this current fiscal year. Is on September first, it goes up to twelve. And then August first, it's thirteen. July one of two thousand twenty-two, it's fourteen. And then by July first, two thousand twenty-three, we're up to fifteen. And I put the backup, I think everybody's aware of it, but Kinetic Conference for Municipalities. I put that in there so you have it in there because it definitely impacts this department. Because not everybody is a union position, so it definitely impacts us. So I think what you did was just basically a ten percent increase in the line items to help, to offset that. One of the things I did propose, and this is like the fourth year I've proposed it, is in the recreation budgets for Park Ranger. What this would be is, and it's been deleted, but just so you know, I put in ten thousand dollars to cover evenings, weekends, holidays, parks. Somebody that's just going to use one of our vehicles and drive from Veterans to Sylvan Lake, down to Echo, out to Winemog, you know, just to be a visual presence in the parks. Because most of the time, these places are wide open, and there's no control. There's nobody up there monitoring what's going on, so it's one of the things. Sometime, sometime I hope somebody considers putting that in. Big thing this year is going to be, we have some other stuff that needs maintenance. It's going to be the pool filter replacement, plus the pool sand filter replacements. I do have quotes on that too, from the person, the company that works on our pool. Last summer, we had to close the swimming pool at the Crestbrook approximately a week earlier than we should have. We usually close the third week in August. We open up pretty much around when the kids get out of school. We had a problem last year with the filters. The filters are, have to be around twenty-five years old now from the last time we did the big renovations on the pool. So if we were going to try to just fix the ones we have, we're looking at a five thousand dollar bill. It'd be around forty-two hundred dollars to fix it, and eight hundred dollars for labor, where we can get a brand-new filter for up there for like fifty-eight, thirty-eight. So for eight hundred dollars more, we're going to get brand-new and not something that's been retrofixed. But that is something we have to definitely consider for this year. And just FYI, the high school pool's been shut down for like ten days already, the pool up here, because it doesn't have heat. So we've had to cancel all of our programs up here, all swimming and whatever we've had in the swimming pool because of the no heat in this pool, so. One of the things, the next thing is a little increase, and it's the split up of the special events that we offer. And instead of just having just everything clumped up under one, we have the Fall Festival, which has been broken out for probably four or five years now. We've had, Fall Festival is its own item. But we also have the Farmer's Market, which last year we reintroduced the Farmer's Market. It was very successful. It costs money to run. Nothing is free. So there's some money in there to offset some of the expenses for that. And also our events at Christmas time, because it's a big time for us, that parade that we have. And the different events that we have surround, you know, right after Thanksgiving for seasonal, we have a crafts fair that we offer that Saturday after Thanksgiving. So there's a lot of events that happen in that weekend, and it's just try to offset some of the costs.
Lisa, excuse me. The Farmer's Market and the Christmas events, that's new money. That was not money that was in there last year. So how did you cover it in the past?
Covered it under the existing things that are basically in the hole right now, or just about ready to be in the hole. Right? Sponsors, we try to get sponsors as much as we can. Thing is, is there's only so many people that are handing out the money at this point. I think with what's going on with the economy right now with everything, I think people are going to be even more cautious about how much they're sending out for sponsorships. We have our big road race coming up in a couple of weeks. And we're very fortunate because it's before the Corona hit, so our sponsorship is very good for the Shamrock. We're probably around a thousand right now, so between the kids' race and the adult race. So we'll pick up probably two, three hundred more that day, so. But we try to, somewhere or another, you know, we just ask for money. I mean, it's, you know, we have no choice. On the next page, the flags, just so you know, there's a hundred and sixty flags on Main Streets, on the main roads. Hundred and sixty flags. They're all sitting in my office, your future chambers down there. And they're getting ready. They'll go out the third week in May. But we had to, this year, replace every flag because they got destroyed last year, plus forty-eight poles. So there's, it's a lot. It's a lot of inventory. And then, just so you know, there's eleven flag poles alone just at the Veterans Park. So when you see, when I ask for flags, you know what that's all about. Going down to the capital stuff, public address system is, I'm asking for fifteen hundred dollars to fix the Green, Watertown Greens Electrical Service for the P.A. system. Because if you are waiting to turn on the Christmas tree for Santa, you can't use the sound system within the gazebo. It has to be rewired. You can't use it until the lights flick on because it's all on the same circuit. It doesn't sound like a big deal. It is, especially if you're this big. It's a big deal. So I know it's come up before about the gazebo maintenance fund. I printed it out. Who's on the board? It's Elizabeth Porto, Richard Wong, and then there's a vacancy. They can't find any money in that account, in the gazebo maintenance account. You've never found anything, so.
Nothing, no.
They're saying there's no money left?
I can't even find when there, where there was a fund developed.
Oh, I know there was because I was on board.
Can't find anything. If I had, if I had a name of what the fund was, it would be a lot easier, but nobody knows the exact name of the fund. Was it named after somebody?
I might even have a treasure report.
That would be excellent.
Yeah, let me look.
It's been known for how many months?
I know, I know. When I have the time, I start digging into it.
So you would know, because I know that this has come up before about, I think it was bicentennial or something. Bicentennial, because that was a big deal back then. And then I've asked for some furniture for the office, for a conference table or whatever for our new office, because we don't, we're not going to have one unless we scrounge something up, which probably can do that too. But I'm asking for some furniture for the new office when we move, so that's the rock.
Do we, do we generate revenue from those events? Are those, is what you're showing us here, like kind of the net, like we have a net loss that we need more money to cover that? Is that what you're showing?
We have pay-for-play. Is that, is that what you're talking about, some of the programs?
No, just like, you know, when we have the, like the Farmer's Market, for example, are there, is there any revenue that we generate from that?
Yes. Okay. And that goes back into the special account, the pay-for-play. It typically does not pay for itself because I'm had, there's the person who's running it. And then I have kids working, directing traffic, getting people in and out, setting up, helping set up. So there's logistical things. Same thing for like the night outs, the block artists and stuff, which are down to two. We narrow that down to two. The money, yeah, there's money that comes in, there's sponsorship money, and then it goes back out to pay for stuff. Like there's entertainment. Every week, there's something, whether it's a kid's thing or she has a little combo playing guitar or something, you know, for fifty bucks, you know. But there's, we try to have stuff. You always want to have something there to draw people in. So it's kind of, I'm not going to say it's a wash, because in that case, we were getting reestablished. We hadn't had the Farmer's Market for two or three years, and we moved locations. So there was a lot of logistical things, the signage. There was a lot of stuff that had to happen last year because we were up the library for years, and we were down at the land. Now we're up near the Westbury Corner Store. So there's a lot of stuff that had to be changed last year that it cost, everything cost.
We maintain like an internal accounting of that?
It's a separate fund, yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good, Chair. One of the items that was removed from your budget was labeled community and senior center under the recreation department. What was that for, and why is it under that part?
It's two years you've asked me that question.
Remind me what the answer was from a year ago.
That's last year. I had it in there last year also. What that is, is for our future, we were kind of supposed to be next in line, but we are eventually going to have to replace our senior center and slash community center. And that's the money to have someone outside of Town of Watertown, or, you know, a professional agency design the building or whatever is going to happen up there.
And why is that part of the recreation budget versus the senior center?
Because it's not going to be just the senior center.
It's going to be all.
It's going to be all encompassing. At least, that's what I'm hoping.
Thank you.
Okay. So that's why, you asked me the same thing last year. Senior Center now?
Senior Center.
Well, could I, I'm sorry. Could I ask one question? I'm just wondering, when you go back to the Park Ranger, are there examples or do you have evidence of where there's been problems in the parks at night, or it's just a general concern?
It's, you have.
Or weekends, or?
You have sometimes when there's a tournament going on, and they are supposed to be responsible to have people monitoring, so people aren't parked on the grass. They're not, you want to have where Dave and the guys can come through if there's ever an emergency, if you ever had to get apparatus in there, you've got to have, the road is opened. Just sometime, you know, I mean, you don't know what's going on up there. I mean, we have, it's open park. It's open to anybody, and, you know, things can happen. So we have cameras on top of the bathrooms. So there's, the cameras are facing the playground and the pavilion, and there's one out in the front that's supposed to capture vehicles going in and out. But it also, that's just veterans. We have Sylvan Lake, who, that's a whole nother animal in itself. We have the lifeguards. We have people that want to go over and jump off the rock. They're constantly calling the police. The police are down there a lot. So there's just different things. So it's to keep more tabs on what we have because, again, we're not there, you know. So if somebody has a pavilion permit, we have all over the pavilions permits, you know, keep your permit with you because if somebody else shows up and they're trying to be squatters, you know, the police have to be notified, they're going to say, "Who has the permit?", and it's the person with the piece of paper. And it, you know, it would just be a good thing to have a presence, that's a visual presence, that, you know, that there's, there's people watching, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Senior Center. Catherine is here, if anybody had a question. In the front of your packet tonight, you'll see that she has, again, there's all the statistics for the center and the monthly calendar. And then it's, there's also the Greater Waterway Transit District audit is in there. As far as the senior center. I did put in for a full-time assistant for Catherine. That was deleted. One of the things that was caught a little bit was the operators. The operators are bus drivers. That's what they call operators. It's not somebody answering the phone. That's right now, two people, part-time people. There's no benefits involved. It's not a union position, union positions. One of the things I was trying to do is have more, we have a brand-new bus we just got two months ago. We have buses, be able to use them for more activities. That's why there was an increase. So that our senior population would have, they wanted to do the Farmer's Market on a Sunday to have somebody be able to, you know, for a couple of hours, maybe bring them to the Farmer's Market or someplace. Down at the bottom, it's the same thing, but just so you know, with the cable internet, the Lions Club is no longer paying, so that's why it's in there. Not that it's an increase or anything, but just so there's a lot of history there. The Lions Club used to pay for it. Now they just give us a stipend. One of the things, special events, I did ask for more money for Catherine. I asked for six grand. I had the same amount before. I do have to comment, Catherine is very good at getting grants and sponsors. One of the other things is rec supplies. One of the things that recently, not in the last year or so, the coffee cups and all that kind of stuff is coming out of this account, so. There's always coffee at the senior center. I know she gets a lot of it donated, but the cups and things like that aren't donated. So it's the things that the town has to buy. The furniture is for a file cabinet, the furniture other. I know you were looking at everybody's accounts for furniture, but that's for replacement chairs put on the center because they do get used, abused, and soiled. So that's to replace those as they need to be. Computer, that's to replace one Windows Seven computer. And then the only other thing is the security system. I have five thousand dollars in there that was deleted. And I'm waiting for a quote from I.T. to replace more of these security cameras down the senior center. I believe it's going to be between twelve hundred and fifteen hundred dollars for more security cameras down there.
I'm seeing security system five hundred.
Yeah, but that was cut out. That was what I originally requested because we were only talking about one additional outdoor. Since then, our I.T. department, Andy, has done like an inventory, and there's some kind of dark spots around the building, in the back and on the side. That probably should have a camera. So that's around between twelve hundred and fifteen hundred dollars.
And that's not in here?
No.
Okay, just.
That's to replace. That's our senior budget. Crestbrook. Okay. Crestbrook's its own animal because it's not general fund, even though some of the stuff has been broken out into the general fund now, so there's. And ask for another labor. That was cut out. We just don't have the money. Now, the important thing is, and Sue's going to probably have to jump in here. One of the things is, is estimated one hundred and fifty-three, nine, sixty-five is the medical insurance. And Crestbrook's portion, for the first time ever, is going to be approximately half of that. And it's proposed to have the town to pick up part of the medical, so approximately half of the medical, which is a first. This is kind of something when, actually Frank was in my budget reviews, and this is like a first to have the town pick up some of the medical for the, for the employees, I think the workforce. One of the other things is probably to help offset some of the deficit from up there.
They're part of the same health plant as other town employees.
They are, and they're also in the union, the same union as the Highway Department. But the golf courses have been paying a hundred percent off their medical all along. And I know that was, I know that the auditor was very concerned about that, if something ever happened. So, but it was also one of those things that was suggested during our budget reviews to have the town start to offset some of that. One of the unknowns is, just so you know, going down the list, the golf pro currently is, his contract is being negotiated between the town manager and the town attorney and the assistant town manager. So his contract is up at the end of this month. They've been negotiating with him for at least a month, I guess.
Yeah, we'll have a draft contract prepared for the Park and Rec Commission Thursday.
Okay. So I left that at the same amount that he was getting. Bottom, there's two big things. Again, this is all the enterprise fund here, which is not general fund. But there's two things at the bottom. One of them is the building maintenance, the pump house and the restaurant. And there's, actually on the next page, too, there's pro shops and the maintenance building. We have well water up there. We don't have city water. We did just lose the power. We lost, not the power, but we lost control for the restaurant, not this past Saturday, the Saturday before, when they had a, they had a special event going on up there, drove 200 people, and they lost the water. So it was an emergency call to have the control panel fixed. But we think that the well, the pump in the well, it's going to be the next thing to go. So that might not be able to wait till July. That's probably going to be something I'm going to be coming back to talk to you about. But there's some stuff that has to be addressed coming up. And this is all due to the pumps and the wells up there. So those are added in. Next thing, which is really, this is a bone of contention with me, but it's part of the contract with the highway, which is part of the highway. I'm skipping down to laundry and dry cleaning. And what you'll see is this big crazy jump, and that's a contractual thing with the highway department. And I have, I have the information here. It's crazy. It's like $83, $85 a week, or some crazy amount. But it's something in the union contract, so I have to buy-buy it. But it's like I go go to Marshalls and buy towels every week for cheaper than what we're getting this stuff worth. So, so that's why you're going to see a bump in that.
$4,800 for laundry and dry cleaning?
For two guys.
I'll do it for half.
As I said, I could go to Marshalls and buy them towels and stuff every week, and they could cut them up and use that way. But some kind of contractual thing, which is, to me, is.
$4,800.
It's crazy. There's a couple of things that got caught, but we had to try to make things balanced in this budget, because we have to guesstimate what we're going to be taking in in revenues. And then the expenditure can't go over that amount. So bunker sand and dressing sand for out on the course itself is a little, I put it in low, but yeah, that was one of the things we had to kind of tweak down to make things jive. And just at very, almost at the very end, one of the things is, we're just mower repair replacement. Last year, we were able to, because of this replacement fund, we was able to get a new green mower and air raider, I think it was. And it was over lease purchase. So approximately $9,000 of the $20,000 is payment for the second installment. And the other would be, in the event something dies up there, because a lot of the equipment is old. And again, it's not, it's not like the general fund. If it's not in there, this way, at least, we have the seed money there if we have to replace something. And that's it. And then in your book, too, because I know you can be asking, there's all kinds of stats, okay? So you have an idea of the numbers and stuff.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you. Sorry, you went some on?
No.
John, town manager's report, please.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. Well, effective today, I've appointed Deputy Chief Berniger, Acting Chief of Police in my absence. As you know, he just returned from a fundraising effort in Africa with the Connecticut Special Olympics. He was part of a six-member team, a 12-member team. The team collectively raised $160,000 for their efforts, and of that, $100,000 went directly to Special Olympics. The Watertown team raised $32,400, of which $22,400 went directly to Special Olympics. It was one of the, thank you. It was one of the largest fundraisers ever. And as you know, we have many special citizens in Watertown that participate in our sports and our torch run, as well as the Olympic Games down at Southern. So I'm sure they're grateful for the efforts of the team and the efforts of Watertown. The Watertown team was in the lead for fundraising up until about the last week, and our friends in Wilton found a very generous donor there, and they think they beat us out by about $1,100. But that's okay. It's a good cause. And I just want to say for the record that Deputy Chief Berniger and Lieutenant Gavallas took personal vacation time to participate in this effort. They were not given any time off by the town. So there was no cost to the town in this effort. Looking at the Hemingway renovation project, you probably saw the memo in your packet that I've stopped these change orders from being processed until I've had an opportunity to look them over, review them, and approve them. I'm finding out that these change orders were coming through to the town manager for approval, but the work's already been done. And over the life of the project, we've done just over half a million dollars in change orders. And these are very expensive. So there are going to be no more change orders implemented without my express approval, and I will review them to see that they, if they are needed to be done at this time. We've got some IT issues there we're working on. There is an issue with the tax collector's office, the way it has been constructed. I've talked with Carla, and she has some serious concerns about some changes there. And that may require a change order. I want to get a price on it and the cost before I go ahead and approve that. But it's something that will most likely have to take place. We received a check from MIRA, our share of the surplus for $40,623. That money was budgeted on the revenue side, so I can't say we just found $40,000. It's already on the revenue side. The John Staver Fund, Park and Rec just received a check for $13,074.21. That is a quarterly check, and we do the math on it. It comes out to about $52,296 a year. Now, I anticipate that will rise a little bit, because the money is being invested. And over the following year, I'm sure you're going to see a return of probably 5% to 6%, 7% on it. So these quarterly checks will probably be closer to perhaps to $14,000 if they're coming through. So that's all I have this time.
New business.
Motion. I move to approve the, what is this?
Appropriation.
Must be. I move to approve an appropriation in the amount of $11,558.2 for the final invoice for construction oversight and an as-built survey of the Hemingway Pond Dam removal project.
Have a second. Any discretion?
The record that money is coming from the state?
Correct, yes. Anyone else? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any opposed, abstentions? Motion passes unanimously.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing the transfer of funds between the items for fiscal year 2019, 2020.
Second. Discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, any abstentions? Motion passes. And public participation limited to the items on the agenda? Anyone? Public participation? Hearing none. Motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.